Apologies.
Okay. What's that? Okay. All right. Apologize for the delay. We are ready to get started. Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the October 2nd, 2024 Bruce Township Planning Commission meeting. Our meeting start time is 6:07 PM. Dana, will you please call the roll?
Ed Cupid.
Here.
Rick Haggelstein.
Excused.
Randy Cant.
Here.
Anne Marie Boyce.
Here.
Manny Burnett.
Also excused.
Darryl Blaylock.
Also excused.
Jared Benson.
Here.
We have a quorum. Before we start the business part of our meeting, I would ask that you rise and join us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. This is a public business meeting of the Planning Commission, but we do welcome public comments at various points on our agenda this evening. We do request, if you haven't already done so, to sign in at the sheet to my right, just so we have a record of who is here in attendance. The commission is made up of seven Bruce Township residents appointed by the board. In addition, we have a township employee Dana Buchanan, who assists us in several different capacities. We also have Joe Tangeri, who's a professional planner with Giffords Webster, who is an advisor to us. There will be opportunities throughout the agenda for public questions and comments. Generally, we ask that you keep the comments to three minutes. As you can see, we have a full house tonight, so we will be trying to stick to that three-minute rule. If you do come to the podium, we ask you to state your name and address, so we have a record of who you are, and ask that you address the commission, not anybody in the audience, please. And with that, we will get going on our agenda for this evening. Next up is approval of the minutes from the August 7th Planning Commission meeting. Missioners, you got to update a copy when you got to your seat. Based on some updates from Anne Marie and Dana. Are there any other items to note for correction?
Move to approve the minutes.
I'll second it.
Motion by Cupid, second by Cant. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, nay? Minutes are approved. Next up is the approval of the agenda. As you have it here in front of you, are there any proposed changes to the agenda this evening? Here we now, we're going to stick with the agenda as stated. So, item six is public comment. So, this is different than the public hearing related to poultry, which I suspect there is a big turnout for. So, if you're here to talk about anything other than the poultry, please make your way up to the podium and state your name and address, and you've got three minutes.
Paul Wokeniewski, 71970 Glassier Road. After the September board meeting, the Record Newspaper reported that it was mentioned that there was no concerted effort to rezone Van Dyke from 34 Mile to Boardman. Yet, at the June and July board meetings, the supervisor and treasurer publicly stated their support for such commercial development. In fact, I believe the treasurer said, "We got to have commercial to keep it rural." Kind of interesting statement. So, the Record Representative is not here tonight, but I know that they watch these meetings, and I have to ask why they didn't report that. Or the unprecedented motion by the Planning Commission member, Rick Haggelstein, to table a zoning request for a year until the master plan was revised. That was an inappropriate motion. A rezoning request should be voted up or down on its merits based on the current master plan and not a possible outcome of a future master plan revision. The motion should be reconsidered by the Planning Commission. When reviewing the master plan, which is appropriate, remember that C3 zoning has never had a place in Bruce Township and should never be considered in the master plan for this community. By the way, has anyone on the Planning Commission been working with the developers of Fisher between Taft and 34 Mile to recommend or try to get some open space developments in there rather than just the regular developments? I think that's a prime area for some open space development within a number of acres and the topography that's in that area.
Thank you.
I have a question. I don't know if this is the appropriate time or not.
My name is Kimberly Platavoid. I live at 72255 Fisher Road. I noticed on the agenda here that Mr. DeMille has two reviews for site condos. One of my properties butts directly up to this. Is it? I'm not supposed to get notified prior that this was going to be on the agenda if my property butts up to this? Just a question that I have. No? Okay. Thank you.
Anyone else for public comment?
Steve Crayson, 74103 Caney Road. A quick question regarding public notice. I've been trying to find out, like, for this ordinance, like, where would public notice be for this? And what are the requirements for that? Because one thing I noticed for me, I couldn't find it on the website under public notices, and I couldn't find it on Facebook. So, I'm just curious, where is that notice and what are the requirements for it?
Dana, do you want to take that for it, please? Thank you.
I know we spoke on Facebook. It is on the board, front and back of the township hall. It was in the Record Newspaper on the 18th of September. It also is on our website, in the packet, which I'm happy and always here and available to walk anyone having trouble finding it. I can walk you right to it.
Okay. Well, personally, I think, you know, just my opinion on it is, the packets are very hard to find. And to find it in a packet that has hundreds of pages, I think that's unrealistic to ask people.
There are 56 pages.
Okay.
And it's once you know, like, etc.
Right.
I can walk you to it.
Oh, I understand where it is. I do know where it is.
Give me a call.
But I wouldn't have.
For everyone else's information, though, it's under agendas and minutes.
Yep.
It's also packets. All information, it's the board, it's the Planning Commission, and it's the ZBA. And it's all right on the lower left corner of our website front page. We are looking at redoing our website, but I'm always happy to take anybody's call and help them find.
Well, for me, I was expecting to see it on the public notices page that's currently on the website, and I didn't see it there. So, that was kind of frustrating to me. I just wanted to point that out. Thank you.
You wouldn't notice call if you hadn't. Who would even know? There's no hiding.
All right. All right. If you have a comment to make, you need to come to the podium, please. We're not going to just get into a bigger discussion. Anybody else on public comment? All right. Seen nobody coming in. We will then move on to item seven, which is our public hearing, which is on poultry. All right. So, before we open the public hearing, I do want to just kind of maybe level set as to how we got here and provide some background information for those that may be just getting up to speed. So, I'm going to read through some just things that we've been going through. This was originated as the township started to receive complaints from residents who didn't like that neighborhood chickens were coming into their property and noise complaints about roosters. The Planning Commission was asked if we had an interest in looking into this matter from a zoning standpoint. Without a zoning ordinance to address what is allowed and what is not, there's limited abilities for the township to respond to these concerns. Since May, the Planning Commission has been discussing this topic in public meetings to gather ideas of how we might address this. We follow a standard process for all proposed ordinance changes, with this being no different. An integral part of the zoning or any zoning ordinance change is to accept public input and consider that as part of any recommendation we make. As we approach this topic, it's a balancing act to understand the impact of ordinances and how they would work across vast differences in zoning within the township. We range from higher-density residential areas with multiple homes per acre to large parcels of 10 to 20 acres and more. Please know that we work to try to find solutions that would work for everybody. We appreciate those that have come today to voice their opinions on this proposed ordinance, and we commit to further refining the ordinance if needed. It's entirely possible that we omitted certain factors that warrant further review. Important to note that any zoning ordinance that may be enacted cannot be retroactive. So, residents who have chickens today would be grandfathered in relative to any ordinance that we enact. And lastly, it's important to remember that we are just a recommending body. We don't pass ordinances directly. Any outcome here would be a recommendation to the board for their consideration, which could be approved, denied, or returned for further changes. So, with that, we're going to open the public hearing. During this time, members of the commission will be listening and taking all feedback into account, but we will not be engaging in a back-and-forth dialogue. Due to the large number of attendees, we will be limiting the speaking time to three minutes, as we discussed earlier. And I would give my best, do my best to give you a heads up before you reach that three-minute mark. So, with that, I make a motion to open the public hearing at 6:19 PM, seconded by Boyce. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, nay? All right. Public hearing is now open. If you would like to come speak on this matter, please come to the podium and state your name and address and share your comments.
Here it comes. Paul Wokeniewski, 71970 Glassier. This ordinance looks like it's trying to solve a problem that doesn't exist. And if it does, this should only apply to the R1B and R1C districts. The township supervisor that got involved with a private HOA issue that where one of the residents was raising chickens. Now he wants to restrict yet another aspect of Bruce Township's rural atmosphere, a restriction on hobby farming. How many of the Planning Commission members have ever raised chickens? Well, I have.
No. We're not getting involved, okay?
He can, he can answer. He can answer.
No. Just use your time.
Okay. I have for almost 10 years. Were you aware that a mail-order chickens are a minimum of 15 to keep each other warm and to enhance their survivability? 15 minimum is during the warm months. The minimum is 25 during cold months. So, that exceeds your highest number right there. The township should support hobby farming and subsistence farming along with open space residential developments. If this ordinance passes, I will make sure it's rescinded when I'm elected supervisor in November. And this is why I'm running for supervisor. Keeping Bruce rural is more than just zoning. You have to make sure you attend the meeting, the board meeting, in two weeks on the 16th, because they can override the Planning Commission. They have the final say on this ridiculous ordinance. Do you understand that there's people in this community that have hundreds of chickens? And you're saying if you have 10-plus acres, you only can have 20? And I'd rather hear a rooster than all the traffic that's being promoted with the commercial. Okay? We want a rural atmosphere in Bruce Township. We're going to have it.
Steve Crayson, 74103 Caney Road. For the record, I am running for treasurer for Bruce Township in order to keep it rural. I live on 10 acres, zoned RS, rural suburban. The wildlife on my property alone is in violation of the proposed chicken ordinance. Looking at this ordinance, this is something I would expect to see in Shelby Township or Washington Township, but not Bruce, a farming community. And to me, this is unacceptable. Many families like subsistence farming on their land. They want to provide for their family. Families should have the right to feed their family how they see fit without government intervention. I plan to raise at least 40 chickens next year for eggs and meat on my 10 acres. And I tend to share with my neighbors as well, so I might be more. And I'm like, based on the current rules proposed here, I wouldn't be able to do that. I moved to Bruce for this exact reason, so I would have the freedom to do this. Food prices are soaring, and the number of people receiving aid from food pantries has quadrupled in the last few years. People are raising chickens to offset some of these high prices and keep food on the table. Government should not interfere with a family's ability to feed their family. Vast majorities of Bruce Township residents are sick of overregulation. They want less regulation, not more. People just want to be left alone to live their lives how they see fit. We are adults, not children, who need the government involved in every aspect of our daily lives. If you want to live in an HOA and you don't like how things are enforced, get involved with your HOA and do something about it. HOAs shouldn't make rules they are not willing to enforce, and our township has no business enforcing HOA rules. I know not everyone in the Planning Commission agrees with this ordinance. I feel some are out of touch with the community and its residents. You can't apply rules that address a handful of individual issues to 10,000 residents who don't have any issues with chickens. The solution should fit the problem, not be used as an excuse to overregulate. Thank you.
My name is Derek Lees, 70900 Carnegie Lane. One of the first things you mentioned up here is that this town has residents on acreage, you know, going from half acre up to whatever, 10 acres plus. Bruce Township has a minimum, I believe, two-acre lot size. Anything small in that has been, has been, what do you call it? Anything smaller than that has been, has been a, is not to our, what's the word? Anyway. Anything smaller than two acres shouldn't, isn't, isn't a question here, because they're all, they're all in HOAs. This is an HOA issue. We should, the fact that this, that this entire discussion is even being had is crazy. Bruce Township is rural. People need to be able to have their own food sources. And, I don't know. It's shocking. So, I don't even, I don't even know what else to say. This has to be stopped, so, thank you.
Kimberly Platavoid, 72255 Fisher Road. Again, I think the problem that I see happening all over the place, I come from Chesterfield to Armada to here, is that homeowners don't do their due diligence. When you're buying a property or looking at a home to live, it's up to the homeowner to investigate what your neighbors are like, what your community is like, what your school is like. Too many times, homeowners purchase a piece of property and then decide, "Oh, I don't like my neighbor's chickens." But the neighbor is regulated to do something about it. It's not our problem. Okay? And my biggest concern, I agree with everything that everyone else has said, but my biggest problem is, you don't like roosters because they crow? I'm guessing, I don't know. But what's next? If a rooster is offensive to somebody, what are you going to say next? My lawnmower is offensive to somebody? I can't weed whip between 3:00 and 6:00? I mean, you laugh, but it's the truth. It's the beginning of the end. I live on 20 acres, and with the condition of our food supplies from the grocery stores anymore, I don't buy grocery store eggs no more. I don't care if I grow them myself or if I go to my neighbors and get them. But chickens, goats, cows, pigs, if you have the land, do what you wish on it. That's my personal opinion.
Hi. Jeremy Dusing, 5801 34 Mile Road. My wife and I moved out here from the city with the sole purpose of doing things like raising chickens. Okay? So, I think it's a little absurd that we have to come here to talk about our right to raising chickens out in what we call the country, right? In a rural area. You know, I don't have a lot to say, other than I think this is absolutely ridiculous that we have to come here and talk about this. I would say that if you don't like the sound of roosters, you don't like the. I would say that if you don't like the sound of roosters, you don't like the outside chickens that might get on your property, I mean, maybe you shouldn't live in Bruce Township. You know? There's dogs in our neighborhoods. I hear dogs barking. My wife and I hear them barking. You know, we own a dog too. Tough. Okay? If I don't like it, I can go talk to my neighbor and say, "Hey, can you do something about your dogs?" Okay? If someone has a problem with me, or my wife, or our property, or something we're doing, they can come talk to us, and as good neighbors, we can figure it out. But to bring government into our lives and tell us what we can and can't do on the property we own is for the birds. If I don't like it, this stinks.
I'm the guy in the corner. My wife has checked into these chickens. It's her only thing that she likes. She don't like neighbors. She likes her chickens. Happy wife, happy life. Happy house, happy spouse. We had the superintendent out at our house because we ended up having a rooster. Well, when you get them, you don't know if they're a rooster or if they're a hen. The city came down on it. The kids cried. We had to get rid of our rooster. The superintendent was out at our house. He said, "Everything's good." So I pressed forward. I built a beautiful chicken coop. We have chickens. We've had them for years. My family names them. I figure, what is enough chickens? Enough chickens is when my wife cannot go, "That is Princess laying egg. That is..." And when she gets to the point where she cannot name that chicken, that's too many chickens. All right? I'm here to support my wife. I just built this thing. It's beautiful. You want to see pictures? I got it on my phone. All right? It's perfect for our chickens. They huddle. They stay warm. The run we have is beautiful. They love us. Come on over. They'll love you too. Okay? By the way, it's not about the money. It's not about the eggs. It is about the eggs, but it's about the love of the pet. All right? I can't describe it. All I know is some people like boating, some people like snowmobiling. My wife likes chickens.
That's a tough act to follow.
Michelle Smith, 7995, Van Dyke Road. So you say you've had many complaints. I'm sure most of those are those who live in an HOA. I live on 3 acres on Van Dyke Road. You can't even tell I have chickens unless you come down my driveway. I have no... You can't even see my neighbor's house, which is only one side. The rest of my property is covered by woods. My chickens free-range. So let's say something were to happen to my chickens with your current ordinance, and I replace them with your minimum amount, I would then have to build a privacy fence around my property just for them to have a wonderful life. Have you ever met a chicken that lives inside of a cage versus a chicken that gets to free-range? I can guarantee you their life is way better when they free-range. There was a word that kept being brought up about being a nuisance. What is the township's definition of a nuisance? So according to the Public Health Association states, "A nuisance, meaning in law, is a condition or situation that interferes with the use or enjoyment of property. The interference created must be unreasonable and substantially to qualify as a nuisance." So according to court of law and the courts, there are several factors that determine reasonable. Most reasonable people do not find chickens to be a nuisance. I don't know if you've ever been around them. They're great. They're hilarious, actually. They'll follow you around until you give them treats. Sorry, I got off my track on my notes. There was one person on this board that was spearheading this agenda. He had a problem with the neighbor, and then he didn't even go to the neighbor about the problem. The other thing is roosters. Roosters are there to protect their hens. Yes, they crow, but guess what? That's how they alert the hens that they need to take cover. If you and your... If you were around your family, would you not be able to yell because you're trying to protect your family? That's what they're doing. They're not trying to just annoy the tart out of you, I promise. That is the least thing on their minds. Everyone always wants to... They were saying that they wanted to compare us to Washington Township. So I said, "Why not compare us to Almont, which we are way closer to in density and land and the amount of people? In Almont Township, their ordinance reads as this. If you have 2 acres, for chickens, you can have 30. Okay? If you have 2 acres, over 2 acres, you can have 15 animals per acre. That would mean I could have 45 chickens. As you have it, I can only have 20."
We've got 10 seconds.
Sorry.
You're good.
As far as the location, that can be determined. It's no big deal. I mean, it can be for some people, but those can always be moved. It's more or less just the fact that you want to regulate the amount of chickens that we can have, and I would be grandfathered in. But guess what? What happens to one of my chickens, like my rooster? And now I can't... My rooster can't produce babies. That's also the other reason you have a rooster. Instead of going to buy chicks, I have chickens that can mate, so I can have chicks of my own. So if I don't like a male, does that mean I just get to get rid of him?
All right, thank you.
Doesn't work that way.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Kevin Genoff, 78305, Brown Road. So first, I'd like to thank those of you who actually did show up this evening, knowing that we were going to have this large audience. I very, very much appreciate you showing up unlike some others. What I want to share is a few points. One has been mentioned. Folks move to Bruce Township based on the master plan that's been published for years, based on the rural nature of the township. And what I had heard, listening to the August 7 conversation that was taking place, a lot of this conversation was centered around HOAs. And the fact of the matter is, even according to the master plan, roughly 2/3 of the area of Bruce Township is considered peripheral, RS peripheral. So for an HOA, which is in the minority of the area within the township, to drive township regulation and law is asinine. Further, there was a lot of discussion about whether HOAs can enforce their own laws, and it seemed like the conversation was turning to where it was basically, you know, not feasible. But that's unacceptable. The whole point of an HOA, by definition, and I encourage you all to go look, the definition of an HOA is that they set laws and regulations and enforce them. So to put a blanket rule on the entire township for the few areas that are HOA makes no sense. I agree with everything that's been said today. I know there's been some emotional arguments. There's been some logical arguments. The fact of the matter is, yes, like everybody's saying, when you order a chicken, you don't know if it's a rooster or if it's a hen. It's part of the fun of owning a chicken, seeing what you get. And what we have to all consider is, this is a diverse area with a lot of diverse locations. And what really floors me, I'm against any of the ordinance, to be clear, but even if we had to meet halfway, a blanket ordinance for everybody, when we all live in drastically different environments and conditions and sizes and densities, makes absolutely no sense. So at a minimum, I would encourage the commission to please consider revising this to be more appropriate to the different sections and zones within Bruce Township. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Jean Wall. I'm at 70527, Morenci Drive. That is in Bruce, what is it, Orchard Hills subdivision. So that is part of an HOA that's inactive. So I do have 10 chickens, which would be over the limit, although they are in a 10-by-30 enclosure, and they are so spoiled, rotten. So the planning commission is proposing to limit the number of chickens to five chickens per household with a lot size of 40,000 square feet to 2 acres. How do I pick which chickens to kill? You know, who are they hurting? In my opinion, we're heading towards dark times, and we should all become more self-sustainable. And that's really all I have to say. Thank you.
Danielle House Kwitkowski, 73827, Cane Road. So thank you for the opportunity to provide public comment on the proposed Section 164.5. I own a 10-acre parcel in Bruce Township designated under the rural suburban. I'd like to firstly point out that the authority for the amendment ordinance is not explicitly clear. I think Bruce Township has failed to provide an easy locatable statement of reasonings for why the restrictive amendments are being proposed and by what authority they're actually using to impose requirements that prevent a homeowner the right to farm on their property for personal reasons. This being said, there are many reasons, as discussed tonight, as to why the stringency of the rule has little to no merit. Bruce Township has a predominant RS zone or large acre parcels, and I specifically point this out because the appeal for owning multiple acres for many is due to ideals such as the power of opportunity to farm and use the land for personal gain. Whether it is retaining the power of food production in our own hands or keeping livestock animals for personal use, the appeal of large acre parcels, and living outside of a city or village is why many move to Bruce. Bruce shouldn't subject itself to the whims of a few trying to bring the city to the country, but rather stand by the appeal of why so many choose to live here in the first place. Retaining chickens and other domestic foul and highly inflated economies should be a personal right, where individuals can literally eat the fruits of their own labor on their own land and mitigate the inflated commercialization of modern food supply chains and mass-market goods. Furthermore, owning a rooster protects flocks from birds of prey and ground prey, which live in this area, is extremely valuable, as well as the ability to generate your own future flocks through procreation on-site. Removal of roosters, especially on large parcels of land which accommodate large flocks, requires that the owners buy all chickens rather than incubate and allow hens to raise their own. So what do you do when you have to buy them? You have to raise them, and you have no hens to do it. And then what do you do if you buy a hen that turns into a rooster? You force a family to have to find an additional way to dispose of a living animal because of a restrictive ordinance. We have up to 30 chickens on our property at any given time, no complaints from neighbors, no noise or smell issues, and we allow them to free-range during strategic times of year because they keep tick populations down vastly. This in turn additionally creates an environmental benefit in an area with large population of dog ticks, which can spread Rocky Mountain fever, and it can also curb future spread of deer ticks in the area, ultimately to say that they can help contain the prolific flood of bugs which spread disease in a township with great expanse of wooded areas. Bruce Township is putting forth new regulations that are generally behind the times when many cities and areas revoking chicken and fowl limitations because of renewed pushes for local food production, self-sustainability, and animal welfare, which stemmed from COVID. I could easily argue that at minimum, rural suburban areas should be exempt from regulation, but the reality is, is that the Right to Farm Act does protect all zoning areas for commercial use. Ergo, how does a township plan to monitor and enforce what is commercial or non-commercial? The Right to Farm Act requires certain questions be answered. And is it a farm operation, farm products, and is it commercial? Commercial is deliberate attempt to make profit, and that has no revenue, no acreage, no zoning limitations, which means I can sell my egg to my neighbor for a dollar, and that constitutes commercial production. So how does Bruce Township want to enforce this from an economic perspective, allocate budget to the zone?
Thank you.
I live at 861132, Mall Road. I don't have anything really prepared, and everyone has spoke so much more eloquently than I possibly can, so I just want to give my experience. I moved to Bruce Township in 2018. I also went to elementary school here as a kid, and one of my goals was to bring my children here to grow up in an environment that I did. And what the chickens have done is actually, it's taught my children how to raise their own food in case, you know, like was stated, dark times come. It's an opportunity for our children to be involved in creating life and sustaining life, but also being able to provide your own food for yourself with not just the eggs. But really quick story, my neighbors moved in from Sterling Heights, just to the west of me, and they came and they cleared all of their property. All of the fields are gone. There's nothing but grass and trees now. And what that caused was for all of the animals that lived in their area to come to my house, and I had a fox kill some chickens. I had a raccoon kill some chickens. And what I did for that was I got a rooster. Because as was stated before, roosters are meant to protect the flock, and that's what he did. And he did a very good job. And unfortunately, he did pass. And thankfully, I was able to replace him with another rooster to keep my flock protected. But that being said, it's... The restrictions, I understand some, but I do feel that most are a little bit too strict. I think a 6-foot privacy fence is crazy to me. I spoke with my neighbors back in 2020 when I actually did get my chickens. I did call it Township to make sure that it was okay. What were the ordinances? How many could I have? And when it came to a rooster, before I even got them, I went to my neighbors, explained what was happening. Do you mind? You know, I just... I think most people would have that common courtesy when you know how a rooster can be. And, you know, and the unfortunate event that your hen does turn into a rooster, and you don't always get a good one. So, you know, you take care of that, as a good neighbor would as well. I guess that's it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, Lauren Swayaki, 73317, Cane Road. I am backing off of my neighbor over here, continuing what she helped put together here and what we have to say about it. The Right to Farm Act, she was saying that how does the township plan to monitor and enforce what is commercial or non-commercial? The Right to Farm Act requires certain questions be answered, such as, is it a farm or agriculture? And anyone can easily define and defend commercial operations in any zone. Right to farm laws protect agriculture from lawsuits and limit local control over it. They could change the meaning of private property rights, making property holders use their land subject to the protections of agriculture. The federal definition of a farm means the land, plant, animals, building structures, including ponds, used for agricultural or aquacultural activities. This is irrespective of property size. Machinery, equipment, and other appurtenances used in the commercial production of farm products. In order to meet this definition, you have to answer yes to three questions. Is it a farm operation? Means operation and management of a farm, or a condition or activity that occurs at any time as necessary on a farm in connection with the commercial production, harvesting and storage of farm products, and includes, and specifically includes, the fencing, feeding, watering, sheltering, transportation, treatment, use, handling, and handling and care of farm animals. Is it producing farm products? Defined in the Act as farm product, meaning those plants and animals are useful to human beings produced by agriculture, and includes, but is not limited to, forages and sod crops, grains and feed crops, field crops, dairy and dairy products, poultry and poultry products, and livestock. Is it commercial? The Michigan Right to Farm Act defines commercial as a deliberate attempt to make a profit from producing farm products without requiring a significant level of revenue or profits. Like she was saying before, I could sell one egg to a neighbor for $1, and it would be considered commercial. If the answer is yes to each of these above, it does not matter intent, or that it might be a hobby farm if it meets the criteria of farm operation, farm product, and commercial, then it applies under the Right to Farm Act. In this case, Right to Farm Act is a federal statute, preempts local ordinance. The Michigan Attorney General issued opinion 7302 on March 28, 2018, concluding that a local government ordinance cannot regulate any of the following things due to the RTFA Section 4.6. They cannot limit the number of livestock. This includes chickens per acre. Require a site plan be submitted... Require a site plan be submitted to and approved by the local zoning administrator. Limit manure application to fields in which the farmer owns or holds a seven-year lease. Specify manure application methods and require a comprehensive nutrient management plan to be submitted to and approved by the local unit of government. So while Bruce can seek to limit non-commercial production, the question goes back to, how do you plan to do that? RTFA has no acreage limitations, and failure to effectively manage this program could result in defensible litigation against the township. I think Bruce Township is heading in a direction that is not appropriate for this area, which appeals to a large subset of residents here. Though the ordinance, they have opened up themselves to the need for expensive mechanisms to enforce the act and create an environment which further elevates dispute between neighbors and neighborhoods by getting into too many rules and contingencies.
All right. Thank you.
Todd Randall, 79369 Wire. I want to ask a question, and I know you can't answer me. But where does that, you know, do farmers need to put muzzles on cows so that nobody's offended by mooing? Do we need to ban motorcycles? You know, I mean, I'm not too far from highs, and sometimes a group of motorcycle riders go down my road. That's pretty annoying. Gas powered equipment, is that next? We're going to make everything batteries because they're quiet? Or are we going to take away the right to hunt on our property? That happens to be one of the reasons I bought property in Bruce Township. Ask the drivers in Rochester Hills how that's working out for them. Can't drive through Rochester Hills without hitting a deer. These are onerous restrictions that don't need to be implemented. In reality, a lot of the problems would be resolved by a conversation. If it's inconvenient to the township to have to deal with those disputes, that's a problem for the people in the township to solve. We get that opportunity next month. If it's an inconvenience, well, then maybe you're not right for the job. Fences for free-ranging chickens? They do fly, you know? They do. It happens. Exactly. The limits are ridiculously low. We have, I don't know, what is it, 21 chickens right now, I think, on 10 and 1/2 acres? So we're over the limit? Well, I guess if we kill that rooster, we're okay. It's ridiculous. I heard comments in the video that was posted online from the prior meeting about Washington Township this, and Shelby Township that, and everything else. Well, guess what? I didn't buy property in those townships. I bought it in Bruce Township. For a reason. Been in this township almost my entire life. Okay? This is not Washington Township. Nobody that's in this room wants this to turn into Washington Township, I don't think. So let's solve the problem the way Bruce Township would solve this problem. Let's get along. Thank you.
Can you hear from someone in Armada Township? Is it allowed?
Anyone's allowed to come to the podium.
How you doing? Tim Murphy, Fisher Road, 69801. As far as the placement of the coops, to put it to the rear of the property, my particular property is a rectangular shape with about 1,000 feet running, and I have about five acres of woods between the rear property line. And to move my coops to the rear of that property is one thing, but the problem is the coyotes that are back there. Right now, they're closer up to the house, next to existing building, which gives them shelter. But if I move them back there, they'll never make it. And I think that the amount of, that you're allowing, based on acreage, is way too low. And as far as noise goes, if that's who's complaining about it, we need to do something about Fisher Road and the speed on Fisher Road to control noise. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm Lauren Sadege. I'm at 72701 McFadden, so not Bruce Township, but very close neighbor. I've been a Realtor in the area for about 10 years now, and I just want to come at this with a different perspective. Because I can't tell you how many houses and properties I have been standing in where the first question and primary question in their mind is, can we have chickens here? There has been such a resurgence of hobby farming, especially chicken keeping with the millennial generation and under, who are still working on buying their first homes or their second homes, looking to move here from places like Utica, Shelby Township, Washington Township, that want those freedoms. And so if Bruce Township does pass this, you are automatically pushing them and a major tax base away from this community. They will go to neighboring communities, Armada, Almont, Dryden, where it is allowed. Lopier County does not have any near the same restrictions. So I just wanted to voice my opinion on that. And also, say they were to come and buy a property at a historically rate, historically high value, historically high rate for our generation and under, you are then asking someone to put up privacy fencing, which is running $54.98 for an eight-foot long, six-foot privacy fence. There is no longer anything left in that budget for these people to make these dreams happen. So they will choose a community where they can at a more affordable price. Beyond that, I think everyone's already touched on the heartfelt portions of chicken keeping. And I can't imagine ever telling my son that we would have to give up a rooster who we thought was a hen for nine months. I'm telling you, and that is it, and he never crowed. So I just want to, I just want to caution how this could go. And I do think that if it is something that becomes an ordinance, to really look at how low all of the limits are. They're flock creatures. I could send you a picture of my coop at night. They sleep on top of each other. They really do. So that's it. Thanks for your time.
Thank you.
Comparing us to Washington, 29,000 people on the last census, we're at nine. Shelby, 80,000 people last sentence, or census. And then, looking at the lot sizes comparable to the lot sizes here, I don't see too much lower than two acres anywhere in the township besides R1, nah, smaller areas, subdivisions, stuff like that. And then, chicken coops shall meet the following standards. Do you have someone come out with a tape measure? Count my chickens, tape measure everything, make sure everyone has the right amount of, who's enforcing this? Who's going to send the cops out to come enforce my chicken coop size, where my Alma waste goes? It's great fertilizer. We're going to renew the ground and be able to grow what I need to grow. Rear of the yard, there, I said, coyotes, everything like that. So I don't agree with this at all. I think the government should say over business.
I don't necessarily have chickens or really care to have them, but my son does around the corner. And we get eggs, and I've been with him, but really what my wife and I like to do is, we like to raise meat chickens and kill them and eat them. And that's only been touched on a little bit here, but immediately, just the two of us, we would exceed the 20, no problem. And I don't know about the rest of you, how often you eat chicken per week, if one chicken a week or half a chicken, but it's not very hard to get above 20. We'll do 30 or more each time, and the ordinance doesn't address that at all. Now, we use a chicken tractor, which I don't know if you're familiar with or not, a mobile device that we index. We like to do it twice a day, once in the morning and once in the evening. And we run it all over the yard. Again, as the last gentleman said, it was great fertilizer for the yard. So it's a, I think it's a pretty common item. If you drive around, you see them, maybe you even have them. I don't know. But it's something that should be considered. I and my wife and my son, we're totally against the ordinance as is written. We think it's inappropriate for this area. More than likely, you'll need to do something to show your due diligence, but you can go right down the list of the other items as other people mentioned, like the number of animals in the yard at any given time exceeds the 20 in our property. The noise, all that, you know, the planes flying overhead that seem to be attracted to us when we're out in the yard, as if there's nothing else to look at. They're noisier than any rooster, that's for sure. So that's what I had to say. Thank you.
Thank you.
With these numbers, they just don't make any sense. I have five kids, me and my wife, there's seven of us, we can have five chickens. It just doesn't work out. As far as, everybody pretty much has touched on everything I wanted to say. As far as the fencing, if I were to put up a privacy fence around my acre and a quarter, it'd cost me probably $60,000. Kind of ridiculous when, like the guy said, chickens can fly. You can cut their flight feathers, which keep them down. Can ask my neighbor over here, that the chickens, they don't fly over my fence. They stay in our backyard. Now, at the moment, I have more than five, and my neighbors love them. I don't know, hen doesn't come by, but I do see people in her development come by and feed them, talk to them. My neighbor's on the side of me. My coop is within 10 feet of the property line of my neighbor, but when I put it there, I went over and talked with him, and he was ecstatic that I was getting chickens himself. He thought it was cool. I have, like I said, five kids. I have 10-year-old twins that absolutely love them. And they're smart. I trained them. They don't go on the concrete. They don't go on the deck. You go out and tell them, go, and they run off, just like the dog does. So anyways, that's it. Thank you.
My name is Steve Richardson, 79649 Wire. I agree with everybody, everything everybody's said already. One point that I want to mention is, I don't keep up with minutes and town hall ongoing from month to month and stuff. I think most people here have just realized what's going on. And if things move forward with this, I have a lot of time on my hands, I'll make sure everybody in Township knows what's going on. Thanks.
Hello. I'm Kristy Reader at 71575 Campground Road. Like everybody else, I agree with most things that have been said. I just found out about this on Nextdoor, so I do also agree that there's not a lot of visibility on what's going on sometimes. And then, I know you said we can always come ask, but how do we know what to ask for if we don't know there's a chicken ordinance being discussed? We'd have to look through the whole 56 pages. But that being said, after I saw the post on Nextdoor, I listened to some of the minutes from the original meeting when it was brought up, and just want to bring up the point that some of the numbers that were discussed were very inflated. I know it was brought up that a chicken can lay, or a chicken will lay six eggs a week. So if you have 20 chickens, you're getting 120 eggs. Well, I know that that is, that is not the case. There's seasons. There's good laying hens. There's some that don't lay as many. They go through molts. They get broody. So there's no way with 20 chickens, you're getting 120 eggs a week. And then I don't believe that it's the township's right to determine how many eggs a week we should have anyways. Like, like he said, he's up here, a family of seven. How can you say how many chickens it's going to take to feed his family? You know, they should be able to eat as many eggs a day as they want. So that's all I have to say.
Okay. So seeing nobody come up here, I think before we close the public hearing, I'd like to propose to commissioners that we don't close it. Obviously, we're short a few, I'm sorry, Joe?
I agree with that. I think that's a good idea.
Yeah. We're short a few members of the commission, some of which were heavily involved in some of the crafting of this, and I think based on all the feedback, we need to go back and reevaluate and see if, obviously, there's a lot of information here to digest and how we might move forward. So I would propose that we table this, leave the public hearing open, which would allow us, if and when we do come back with changes, that would allow us to continue the public hearing discussion.
I got a question, real quick. Because we all signed in, does that mean we're now on the list and it will be in the public?
Absolutely. No. No, it does not. Maybe not everybody gets the joke. Okay, so...
May I ask a question?
Yes, ma'am.
Is it appropriate for perhaps Dana to explain the process?
Speak up.
I'm sorry. Asking the question, is it appropriate for Dana, our township representative from the office, the process that she goes through in order to get information out to the public so that people will know that there is an activity occurring that they might be interested in?
I think I did that at the beginning of the meeting.
Okay, but a repeat I'm asking for. Is that okay? If not, go back and watch, because there were, there were things put out there for people to see.
Okay, well, like I said, we had a lot of tension about it, but it does go in the newspaper 15 days prior to a meeting. It is on our website.
What newspaper? What newspaper?
Yeah. This particular meeting was in the record newspaper. It's also on the board, or the boards on the building. It's on our website agenda. I understand that our website is lacking. We're working on that. I don't know what else to do.
Email distribution. Emails.
So there's a Bruce Township, there's a Bruce Township thing on Facebook.
Okay. Thank you. We'll follow up if there's any improvements we can make. Certainly, we're not opposed to making improvements, but there is a process, and we just, we can't change it tomorrow because somebody else is not going to get the notice, so I understand.
If I can just add to the process.
All right. So the motion is to table this, leave the public hearing open, seconded by Boice. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Nay?
Nay.
All right. So, public hearing stays open.
What does that do to the timeline, or what's the next step? What should we watch for?
Yeah, it needs to be a nay if they're tableing it.
We have to be in every meeting.
If I'm allowed to say for one minute, I will vote in favor of that. I happen to be one who voted against it, but for a different reason than you. We had, I can't tell you how many meetings, and I sat as chairman prior to this gentleman, and I think it even dates back to then. Went on for a long period of time. Went on for a long period of time, and I voted in a negative, because I didn't agree with the details of it. There was a lot of effort put into it, and research in what most communities have as ordinances. We don't just create our own. Well, I'm just, and I'll finish quickly. You may not agree, but you gotta watch what's going on in the, in the community. When there is something going on that affects a person, neighboring people get notifications. If I want to do a rezoning, neighboring people get notified. If you're not satisfied that you didn't get anything, we have a candidate for township supervisor here.
That's right.
You have a township supervisor.
Where is he?
He's not supposed to be here.
He does not come to this meeting.
He's not supposed to come to this meeting.
And there is a process, and I don't, you know, I don't know if the board has approved what was sent forward to them, or if it's still in...
Nothing has been sent forward to the board regarding chickens. Not going to, which is the point of the table.
Which is fine, but we did pass something prior.
No, we did not.
We did not.
There was a meeting, two, a couple of meetings ago, I thought we did. I stand corrected.
What we voted on was to proceed with this, to gather the public input.
All right, I stand corrected, okay.
When is the next meeting?
So, just to clarify, nothing's getting decided tonight, we're, this is not going to the board. At the next planning commission meeting, the commissioners will discuss potential changes to this, so there will be probably several months before we would reconvene a public hearing, just best guess at this point.
The next meeting, however, is October 6th, that's the actual, or is it, is it different because of the election?
No, it's November 6th.
Oh, God. November 6th, I'm sorry.
Right.
Looking at my calendar, it says October at the top, and November's the next.
Right. But we would play the whole process out, another notice when there's a public hearing, I imagine.
Yes, and the agenda will be posted.
Yeah.
Now you know who I am, and I work here at the township, please call me, check the website, call me and check the website. I don't know.
Okay.
Thank you, Lori.
And did you vote in favor of the table?
I will vote in favor.
Motion carries. Item is tabled for a future planning commission meeting. Okay. Moving on, item eight is the GTR Rizzo site plan.
It might make sense to...
You need one?
I would agree.
It might make sense.
Okay.
They got all their stuff.
We're going to take a five-minute break.
Was light pole heights, which are on the plan, so we can call this to your attention where those are. Likewise, the rooftop screening is noted on the plan. The other was the foot candles at the property lines was slightly over, and those will be, in fact, I've just learned those have already been adjusted. So, just by shielding and slightly shifting poles, we addressed that. And then one thing we missed on our plan was the note about the berm and the homestead development to our north. There's a berm going in along that property line as part of that development, along with some landscaping.
I didn't see any of the topo on the plan, so I was curious.
Right, yes, that's the intent there. So, you'll see on the engineering plans that berm will be shown. So, that's, those were the only four items in the review letter, and we pretty much wanted to open up to any questions you had for us about the development.
Okay. Any questions before we have Joe just kind of run us through? I think we've all had a chance to look at it, but Joe, just maybe walk us through.
Yeah, I can give kind of some little summaries and things, but he's correct, there really weren't many things to point out here. So, the total square footage of this shopping center that's being proposed, 37,078. And it basically has one driveway onto each of the three roads that bound it, Homestead, 33 Mile, and McKay. And it's almost five acres, and it does have that C2 zoning. As you know, this is part of a larger conditional rezoning where things have kind of moved around over time, but this has been pretty consistently C2 the whole time. You know, I always point out what's around it. We have RM1 zoning to the north, that's the homestead. And then to the east, it's LI1 zoning, and then you've got a former home that's been converted to an office for the Razzes, and then otherwise it's vacant. To the south, you have a mix of single-family vacant and light industrial, that's all zoned light industrial. And then to the west, you have a consent judgment over there that there's R1 district, but it's, subdivision is a little denser than R1. And then the corner there is also C2, so you have the potential for a little bit more commercial development on that side of McKay. Easily meets all the dimensional standards of the C2 district, not really need to go into detail there. They are meeting the appearance standards. They have masonry really all around the building. The way the parking lot kind of surrounds the building sort of means they've got to make it presentable from all directions anyway. I find that they've got plenty of parking. The dimensions of the spaces and maneuvering lanes are compliant. They've got plenty of loading in the back of the building as well. They were able to, originally-
That was one of the issues we-
The design was, they were probably looking at a variance for the location of the loading. They managed to get all of that out of the yard that would require the variance, so now there's no need for variance there. We addressed the rooftop screening. They've got the parking lot and tree replacement, trees that they need. And the clear vision zones are, and I cannot emphasize enough how happy this makes me, they're actually shown on the plan, which they almost never are, and they're kept clear on the landscape plan. I did have a note about the landscaping. They are essentially relying on that berm and the landscaping that the homestead is putting in. I don't think some of you were on the planning commission when the homestead was approved, but there was a, when they got their plan approved, they were putting in a lot more landscaping. They really weren't even required of landscaping there for the homestead because they didn't have anything to the south.
Can you make sure you're talking to your microphone?
No, sorry. But they put a lot of landscaping in on their plan to make sure that they would be screened from anything that went in there in the future.
Okay.
And what they're doing here is pointing to that landscaping. And they do have a lot of trees along that back. They're shown on the plan as mentioned by the representative for the applicant. They did not show the contours of the berm on this plan, which is part of the reason I had as extensive a comment as I did, because I was looking for that. The planning commission has discretion under Section 519A to determine what constitutes sufficient screening and should discuss that with the applicant. And amongst itself, sorry, I'm going to lose my mind right here. I had an awful cold.
Take your time.
Anyway, you can read.
This is what he was worried about, that this is going to happen.
Lighting plan, easily modified, so not really much concern there. And then they're meeting the C2 standards as well.
Take a drink, Joe, you're getting sweated up.
Worst thing-
Want a cough wrap?
I got one. The cold is over, but your body doesn't know it yet.
Okay.
Are you ready for questions, Joe?
There, fire away.
As usual, we have a little list. Am I correct, based on what you just said, that the portion of the green belt berm landscaping, it's on the homestead property, correct? And they have to put that in, per their site plan?
It's not actually required screening for them.
So, they can decide not to do it, still?
To be compliant with their site plan, they have to put it in.
Well, that's what I'm asking.
Right, yeah, yeah, they were exceeding the ordinance requirements.
Right.
But they'll have to put it in.
Okay, so we're assured that that will be that way, and we're not going to be running around trying to-
Correct. And correct me if I'm wrong, is there some mutual agreement for maintenance as well?
Don't recall if there's a maintenance ahead, there's an easement showing on there. Remember, like a recorded easement, but it was an agreement between the property owners, that berm actually, the berm landscaping actually straddles the property.
Correct, okay.
Right.
Good. That was one question. Joe, another question that's for you is, help me along here, because I'm not an expert at any of this lighting stuff. In terms of some of these values that you've noted that have exceeded what is required, isn't our ordinance written such that they have to put the correct downward facing lights in there? And I was not aware that we were trying to jimmy around with the lights so that they, you know, you're adjusting them or shielding them. I thought the lights had to be the lights, according to our ordinance.
So, for our ordinance, the lights do have to be downward shielded, and the fixtures that they're showing are. It's a matter of how the light throws from the fixture. So, on a photometric plan, what you see is the values of light that's hitting the ground on a grid. And the way the light comes out of that fixture is going to determine what those values are. Modern fixtures can be heavily adjusted and back shielded and all kinds of other things so that the light throws properly and doesn't, you know, get over the property line. The current photometric plan, along the north and east property lines, has a few values that are exceeding .1-foot candles, which is our limit at the property line. And there are a couple of ways that that can be addressed. One is adjusting the fixture itself and the way it's throwing light. And the other is, if you want to eliminate, let's say, all the values past a certain point, you can add an additional shield. It's usually called the house side shield, even though it's not on the side of, not always on the side of the light that has a house on it. But typically, it's called a house side shield, and that just blocks the light from going toward the property line. So, it's, you already have a cutoff fixture, this is just a shield that comes down for you.
Okay. What I'm concerned about is if we're re-aiming lights, that we're just going to be shifting glares onto somebody else.
Well, the actual cutoff angle of the light doesn't actually need to change. The light will always have that, you know, flat, parallel to the ground angle that prevents the glare situation. It's things that are internal to the fixture itself.
Okay, I guess I was maybe confused by the use of your word "re-aiming."
Oh, sure, okay, I can understand that, yeah.
All right. So, that was a question. Again, I didn't have time to go dig this out, but it looks like the space toward the back northeast of the building there, that there was, I'm assuming that's where the restaurant's going to be? It looked like there was a little outdoor picnic table area?
There's a few of them, yeah.
Is that intended for outdoor dining for the restaurant?
Yes, that is the intent, yes.
And we don't have anything that, in our ordinance, that prohibits that, correct? I know some communities do.
No, we don't.
But I didn't think we did.
It's actually the kind of activity you want to encourage.
I didn't, I don't think I have anything else, other than to comment, I like this a lot better than the last one you guys brought. This really looks nice. It doesn't, you don't get the feeling that it's a strip setter. I think it's nicely put together.
I think it has a more modern feel-
Yes.
With more of the parking in the rear than it did when more of the parking was thrown.
Correct. But accessible from both sides, from my letters of the drawings.
Yeah, they even got a little passeau there.
Yeah. Okay, so I guess, just to clarify then, from the lighting, do we have what we need in terms of lighting, or would we need to put maybe some just kind of conditional statement around?
The condition would be that the revised photometric plan you submitted.
Could that be submitted with engineering line drawings?
Yeah, it could come in with the engineering, yeah. I'd still take a look at it, but usually those things don't take very long. The lighting companies want to sell you their lights, they're going to put the photometric plan together.
Curious as to what your build-out timeframe, are you looking at?
Time frame, at the moment, we're working with the tenant.
Sure.
And our goal is to try and secure at least 25% to 30% occupancy in the future.
Sure, thank you.
Engineering questions next time. How will we run a year, a year and a half?
Sure. I'll be anxious for a new restaurant in the area.
Okay, commissioners, any other questions for Joe or the applicant with respect to the site plan?
I know I'm not part of this, and I apologize, but I do have one question. It's only, I'm from the area, I'd love to see it succeed, I don't have any issue with it, I'm not. My only real question is the semi-traffic through your facility. How do you plan on getting semis in and out, and unloading and unloading through your, and I, this is first I've seen the site plan, so I'm only asking for my own personal-
I don't have it memorized, but we did run truck templates of it.
Okay.
And it's-
I did too.
That's fine, as long as you get it-
They're going to come in, let me make sure I'm right, they come in here, they come down this route, and that's why this has got this big line turn here, big loading area. Come out here, and then they can swing that way, and then they can swing that way, they back out.
So, they're limited, they can't drive all over the place, but they've got to-
It's got three entrance exits, correct?
Yeah, yeah, the trucks aren't going to be-
But some of them, it doesn't look like you can make it in.
Yeah.
Because once you get a bunch of cars and stuff, I'm just curious.
Yeah.
I couldn't see it.
It works.
Put some light poles nearby, so they can knock them over. Okay, commissioners, again, any other questions, or anybody feeling a motion they want to make? Again, this does not go to the board, because it's a site plan review, so we would issue the approval or denial here.
I'll try.
Okay.
I'll probably need a lot of help, you guys. I'd like to make a motion to approve the site plan for parcel ID 140125-300-031 for GTR Companies with relation to their planned shopping center at the corner of 33 Mile Road in McKay. And this is contingent upon a revised photometric plan to be submitted with the engineering drawings, and that is approved by the engineers in our board.
That was very good. The only thing I would add is that the north property line landscaping, our engineering is accepted.
Thank you. And as discussed this evening, all the questions have been answered, including the arrangement for the north property line with respect to the landscaping. And I think that's it.
Good job.
Second.
Second by can. Any discussion before we vote? All right, Dana, would you call the roll, please?
Cupid's?
Yes.
Vincent?
Yes.
Kent?
Yes.
Voice?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you, thanks, guys. All right, next up is reviews B and C for the DeMille Site Condo Review.
All right, so which one is first on the agenda?
First up is 029.
Okay. That's Taft and Fisher.
Is that the 10 or the 20?
031 is the 20, so-
So, that'd be the 10.
It's the 10.
10.8, we'll do that one first. Christina's crossing.
Joe?
As far as that lot size is concerned-
Yes, thank you.
We actually need some clarification on that, because I was having trouble making out the size of the two lots, and it wasn't adding up to 10.8, so I just need to make sure that we know the size of each and the total, and that they match. So, that was kind of, that was one of my main things that I was going to discuss.
That 3 is supposed to be a 5, Joe, that would need to be a 10, it's supposed to be 2 5s as well.
Okay, yeah, that's what I thought, but on the version of the plan I received, it really looked like a 3. I think it was an artifact of the scanning or something. So, at any rate, this is a bit unusual. We don't usually see site condominiums for two lots. The closest we've seen in the past is that we had a four-lot site condo where all four lots fronted directly on 34 Mile Road, and it was sort of a companion to another site What you have here is a situation where this property had been getting split up, and the splits ran out, because the Land Division Act has a limitation on the number of pure lot splits you can do in a given time period with a given acreage. But the condominium act operates independently of the Land Division Act in many ways, and a site condominium does not count against the splits on a property. In fact, you could have five properties and draw completely new condo lines across all five of them. The condo act essentially allows you to float a condominium over other property. So, you've got an old plat, you can float a condominium over it, you don't have to negate the old plat or anything. So, we did, you know, just because it was like, wow, this is kind of weird, we got these two-lot condos. We actually did go to the township attorney and just say, this is cool, right? And she said, yes, this is fine, you can do this. So, we have two two-lot residential site condominiums in front of us today. We've clarified the acreage issue there. So, R1 requires a minimum lot size of 90,000 square feet and a lot width of 150. Both of the lots are well in excess of that. Drainage requirements are going to basically follow the typical requirements for single-family development, which is pegged to the agricultural runoff rate. Both of the lots front on Taft, one of them has a little bit difference on Fisher as We have a provision of our subdivision and township land development regulations that requires the provision of pedestrian ways. Well, it doesn't make a whole lot of sense to put a sidewalk along in front of these properties. We do have a sidewalk fund that serves as an alternative to that. This isn't a typical subdivision, but strictly speaking, it is a subdivision, so the street tree quantity that we require would apply. Between the two plans, we're looking at four lots. This one doesn't really have much along the road, there's one that's like forested along the road, so, I mean, we can be kind of reasonable about how we apply that, but it does apply. So, there's a 50, tree every 50-foot requirement. And then we've got two stages, well, three really, stages to the condo approval process. One is you've got preliminary approval, that's this, you go through engineering, there's not going to be much engineering for this plan, and then you come back for final. PC grants preliminary approval, final is PC and Township Board. So, we look for some information at preliminary, survey prepared and sealed by a licensed land surveyor or engineer, we've got that. Plan delineating natural features, we have that as well. The location, size, area, width, and dimensions of all condo units, common areas, and the location of proposed streets, well, there aren't any common areas, there aren't any streets. There are two lots in both of these condos, and we can see very clearly their outlines and dimensions, so that is provided. Any structure entrance or driveway within 100 feet of the subject's site, and there really aren't many of those. In the case of the one that fronts on 34 Mile, there isn't, there aren't any. And then in this one, there's a couple across the street, across Taft Road. One thing we usually see on a condo plan is, you know, all the driveways on the lots that are being created. In this case, I think, correct me if I'm wrong, Mike, the developer doesn't yet know where that's going to be, so it's not shown on the plan. These lots are going to be developed independently, unlike most site condos where there's kind of like a, do one lot, start the next one while that one's going. So, it's a little different in that regard from a typical condominium, both of them. I'm kind of, I mean, I have the same thing to say about both of them, so I'm kind of getting ahead of myself a little bit on the next one. But, I mean, that's, this is just a different type of condominium plan than we're used to, so, you know, there's, there's just some, some things about it that are a little different than what we usually see.
Just to make a comment, just so you guys know, this parcel-
Can you go to the mic?
Thanks, Mike.
This parcel could be broken down more, but we don't want to. The zoning is two acres, we could have four parcels here, and we could have four parcels on the other one. I know it was commented by the gentleman that's running for office that we have to have green space or whatever. We already did that.
Sure.
By only making two parcels rather than four. So, I just wanted you guys to know that, that it, I live here, I've been here for 30 years, I like the place to be nice too, so.
Understood. And so, it's two, is roughly two five-acre parcels?
Yeah, well, it's like 5.8 and like 5 and a scant, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, so it's greater than 5, actually, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Joe? Am I correct, would I be correct in stating that he's entitled to this arrangement, this split, under law?
Yeah, that's correct.
And am I also correct in stating that what he's presented in terms of the basic concept of the two five-acre lots is fully compliant with our ordinance?
That's correct, subject to that one comment I had about those trees.
Correct.
But otherwise, yes.
So, in the case of a preliminary site plan approval, such as is before us, how, if the commissioners are interested, how do we accommodate a stipulation about the trees on this particular one we're looking at now? And how do we address the fact that our ordinance as is, and the requirements for the site condo approval process really does not anticipate a situation like this where, to me- condo approval process really does not anticipate a situation like this where, to make it, keep it very rural, and the parcel is very large, that, you know, these driveways aren't in writing at this point? I mean, do we have options to deal with that?
So, there's two things I would say. One is those trees could be shown on the final condo document when he comes back for the final approval. So, that's what I would say in a motion, is the required trees are to be shown on the final condo document. As far as the driveways, I think that the best way to handle that is to state that, you know, all driveways and building, and all future driveways and buildings shall be compliant with applicable township regulations, and buildings shall be located within the permitted building envelope of the property. And I think that will cover it, and you could do that with both of them.
And then, how should we look to be addressing? I agree, I mean, you're not gonna put sidewalks on...
Right.
Oh, that would be ridiculous, but how do we accommodate that?
He may use the alternative, which is the fund.
Do we need to get that nailed down now?
I mean, you can simply say that he's being permitted to not build the pedestrian way there and to use the fund as an alternative, and that would cover it. I mean, I think it's engineering review where they figure out what goes in the fund. I've never been part of that conversation before.
But it's an either/or, right?
Exactly, yeah. And there have been others, for instance, that other one that was on 34 Mile, they pay into the fund.
Okay.
So, both those, the pedestrian ways and the street trees are mandated, they wouldn't...
They are, yeah, there's no, like, there's no waiver for them or anything like that. The fund is really the only way to get around the sidewalk one.
Anything else, just because it's a condo, like, does it have to have a condo association or some of those types of things that we've seen in the past with these?
It will have an association of two.
Of two. Hopefully, there's not a disagreement, because that'll be hard to...
I mean, I think it's gonna be a very short agreement, and the condo, they're not gonna have much to do.
They'll need a way to control the chickens.
Too soon, right? Okay, but does that come later, then? I assume it's just something that has to get filed at some point?
It's a part of the final.
Okay.
The term is the one I would use that.
Okay.
Again, I don't think there will be much content to it with just two lots.
Right. Okay, thank you, Joe. Thanks for clarifying, Mike. Commissioners, any, oh, Joe, I have a question. You have in here that we grant the preliminary...
That's correct, yeah. It's PC and Township Board grant the final.
Okay, so this is just like the site plan we just did, we would grant the approval, and it doesn't go to the board?
That's correct.
Okay.
Okay, that's a good question. Are questions allowed?
Technically, no. Is it quick?
Yes, I'm just wondering, I appreciate Mr. DeMello only splitting it into two. My question is, if you approve this, and say in a year he can't sell these two properties, is he, does he have the option to come back and request for more splits?
Strictly speaking, he would have the ability, under Michigan law, to come back and request an amendment to the condominium that could potentially have more lots.
So, he could? Okay, thank you.
And the minimum size there would be 90,000 square feet.
Thank you.
Any other questions from commissioners, or someone looking to make a motion? Or just wanna talk through a motion?
There's really no adjustments to this, right? It's just approved as...
Well, there are...
It's really the trees and the pedestrian ways.
Yeah.
And nobody about the building envelopes and driveways being compliant.
Yeah. Wanna start, remind me? And I'll add in.
Yeah, I'll make a motion that we approve the site condo review for parcel 1401-29-10031 and 29, with the stipulation of the pedestrian ways, not doing the sidewalks to, the developer pays into the township fund, and then also complies with the regulation for street trees. And then the building, was it the building envelope fits within the requirements for the parcel size?
As well as the driveways?
As well as the driveways.
Future buildings and driveways will comply with applicable township ordinances and building envelope.
That's, you're gonna, your motion is correct for the preliminary approval.
Dana, did you get the wording on Joe's language for the building envelope piece?
I got the first part, driveways will comply with, can you repeat that after that part?
Yeah, future driveways and buildings will comply with applicable township ordinances and be located within the required building envelope. Buildings will be located in the building envelope. The driveways obviously gotta extend outside the building envelope. Can get to the street if it didn't.
Right.
All right, so we got a motion on the table to approve based with some conditions around pedestrian ways, street trees, and compliance with the building envelope and for driveways and buildings. Everybody good with that and the conditions or items?
Did you say that it was, this was covering both of them, 029? Is that how you...
He did, I wanted to touch on that before we do a final vote, because I know we only covered the first piece.
We've gotta have separate motions for both of them.
Okay.
Yeah, but you can more or less repeat the motion.
Okay.
Prime mistake, I was reading off of your notes here, and they were both on the top.
Oh, oh.
For the parcel numbers.
Oh, yeah, well, there's, there's, yeah.
Okay, so the other one is, is, so one of them is 31, the other one is 29?
This would be the 29, the first one that we just been talking about.
So, I'll change that motion just to include 29, excluding 31.
On that one, the one thing I would say is that for the street tree item, I, there's so many trees right now, like, I don't think it's necessary. I think, I think you can, I think you can cite the presence of existing trees.
Well, you're, you're talking about the other parcel.
Yeah, yeah.
So, we're, let's get to 29.
Oh, sorry, yeah, yeah, you haven't voted yet, yeah, do that, and then...
31, right? Are we doing 31 first?
29. 29.
Which is the L-shaped one, right?
Yes.
Okay.
So, everything that Randy said is for 29.
Okay.
Okay. Motion by Kent, I'll second. Any other discussion before we vote? Dana, would you call the roll, please?
Cupids?
Yes.
Kent?
Yes.
Voists?
Yes.
Benson?
Yes.
Motion carries. All right, so next up is parcel 31, which is essentially the same scenario, different piece of property. This one looks to be 20.06 acres?
Yes.
If this is correct?
Being split into two 10 acre parcels.
Two 10 acre parcels, okay. And so, Joe, I think everything else applies that we talked about relative to pedestrian walkways. Let's hit on the street trees, because you mentioned this one is different, because there's, it's heavily forested.
I think you can determine that the street trees are already present. There's hundreds of trees along that street.
Correct.
At the front of this property, so...
Do you intend to keep it that way?
I can say whatever I want, it's their property.
Yeah, I understand.
They gotta meet your codes, of course, but...
Right. Well, the driveways are obviously gonna have to go in.
Right, yeah.
I don't think they were gonna wanna keep the trees.
I would assume, yes. It's very private.
When I did the development over here, there was a lot of trees I could've taken out, but I'm looking at these trees, they took 200 years to get there, I couldn't have the heart to take them out. I'm just gonna leave most of the people after they bought it, for whatever reason, they had to take this one out for putting the tree in or put the house in, put the ground, I don't know, I just, I couldn't see it, but it is what it is. I can't, I can't make them not do it, you know, if they wished to.
We have, we have our wood preservation...
Yeah.
There you go.
We have some ways to regulate that, I believe. Okay. And then, same thing around driveway and building within the building envelope? Okay.
We need a separate motion, correct, Joe?
Yes.
I will make a motion that we approve the preliminary condominium plan review for parcel 1401-29-100-31, which is on the south side of 34 Mile Road, and this is contingent upon the developer paying into the township fund in lieu of construction of pedestrian walkways, and that the final plans have what you said about the building envelope and the entrance ways being compliant with our existing ordinances.
All right, motion by Voists.
I'll second this.
Second by Kent. Any other discussion? Dana, would you call the roll, please?
Kent?
Yes.
Voists?
Yes.
Cupids?
Yes.
Benson?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you very much.
All right, thanks, Mike.
Thank you so much. Joe, may I see you again?
I'm sure we'll see each other soon.
Okay, that wraps up our reviews for this evening. Item nine is communications. Any communications?
I have commissioner communication, I think that's later.
Well, yeah, we'll cover that in a minute. So, moving on to item 10, unfinished business is our agribusiness and agritourism. I know we got some members absent.
Yes, and because of the scheduling with both of them having pre-planned vacations, we were unable to get together. I think I gave a good update at our meeting in August. Couple of other observations, and this is becoming more apparent to me that whatever we end up with, any changes that we may choose to make to the existing ordinance, we're definitely gonna have to make sure that it dovetails with whatever is the outcome of the master plan. We make no changes to the master plan, then it's straightforward. If there are changes, or, you know, we get community input on how we should be looking at things in general, we would definitely need to incorporate that into what we're doing for agritourism. So, I really, I mean, we could write an ordinance right now, but it, and I think we could work on structure, that would be there regardless, but I think we really, I don't see this getting approved anytime, anytime soon, or even to the point of, you know, having conversation with, meaningful conversation on it, because it just, you pointed this out a long time ago, it really does have to work together.
Right.
And that's about all I have on there. Unless you guys have any questions?
Any questions on the agritourism? Hearing none. Joe, anything on 5G?
No.
Okay, continue to table that. All right, item 11 then takes us to new business, which is the Orchard Hills and Gilcher Lighting.
Brent, you survived all the way to this point.
The computer battery's still alive, so we're okay. Good evening, Brent Kraft with Giffords Webster, engineer, the same company that Joe works for, but we've been working with the Parks and Rec Department here for a while on a handful of projects, and over the last couple of months, they've come to us with a couple safety concerns on their parks, both vandalism and just safety at night concerns. The specific one they talked about was Orchard Hills Park right here on 33 Mile behind Emmett's. They, we've kind of looked into what we can do to help get rid of, or just light up the area at night when people are, you know, could be doing something there that they shouldn't be. Again, kids play in this park, I know that at night, you're not supposed to be really in a park, but, you know, walking and everything like that. So, we did look into a couple solar options, just for, you know, put some lights throughout, but then we also talked with DT regarding their, what is it, outdoor protective lighting plan. So, DT will come install these, you know, public municipality lights in the park, they own, they maintain it, and they contribute a lot to the construction, as well as they hire the contractor and do everything. Parks and Rec would then, you know, sign a contract, but them have to pay back and everything, and that's typically what they do. So, what we've provided in this document is to offer dust till dawn service in this area that meets the township ordinance, in terms of the foot candles at, at the property lines, meeting the LED requirements, meeting the color temperature, it's down, it's shielded, all of those requirements. There's five lights in the area. You'll see three of them are kind of around that parking area, you know, near the front, and then one near the playground, as well as one near the basketball court and everything like that. So, this is more for just making sure that you guys are aware of it, if you did have any concerns, and last week I was at the Parks and Rec Commission meeting, or two weeks ago, they approved this as pending just any further comments from you guys.
I have a question. You may, may or may not be aware of this, and I appreciate it's a very dark area.
Yeah.
Which, which is to me actually kind of desirable, can be. But there are, there's one house, there's a lot of woods, but there's one house directly to the west of the play area.
And that is, I think, 70800 Moreney, right, wanna say?
Morense.
Yeah, Morense, yeah.
Right, and then back further down that same street, I think there are maybe three or four houses that are, they look right at the park. And then, south of where the Emmett's Energy location is, you've got the other subdivision, I think they call it Hillside. There are, it looks like at least four houses, perhaps more, that have, you know, a few. Has discussions been had with those neighbors?
We haven't discussed, I might not know every question. I have not directly, Parks and Rec may have, but I do not know if they've specifically talked to these neighbors. I know meeting the ordinance of being that .1 foot candle...
I know meeting the ordinance of being that .1-foot candles at the property line was the big focus, to make sure that we weren't really impacting them, as well as, again, they're, they're facing down, they're shielded and everything, so you're not getting that spray.
Correct. I understand it's within the ordinance. I would just like to know that the neighbors are apprised of what's going on, because, you know, although that light won't be shining at them if they're sitting outside.
We, we, I fully understand that. We actually just did a very similar thing. We worked with Parks and Rec on the pickleball court behind Township Hall at Washington Township, and we did get a comment from one of those residents, because a couple of those trees came down saying, hey, now I see the lights when I didn't before. So there has been discussion, so I do understand that. I'd be, we can talk to Parks and Rec tomorrow, I can, and see if they, we can have some further communication specifically to these couple of residents, if you would like.
I think there are about five or six.
Yep.
I'm kind of guessing that from a security standpoint, because I know there have been instances, that it's probably a big plus. On the other hand, I'm not one who likes to, you know, spring some...
And I know specifically, I mean, there's a lot of conversations tonight about being a rural community, not wanting this light pollution, so 100% understand that this is more for that security purpose. We don't want to have this lit up, so you're seeing every little square inch and everything. It's, this is security.
I think the people deserve an explanation as to why, and also, being, most people don't understand, you know, the concept of different kind of lightings, that they're are sure that, you know, they're not going to be, it's probably going to be less than what's coming off of the shopping center.
Yeah. So, yeah, that, I can talk to Parks and Rec, and if you would like, I could, we can formally do a couple of communications to that resident on Morene, anything, anything adjacent to this property, just to give that formal announcement. And typically, this process with DT, once it gets going, they said it's a 90-day minimum period by the time this gets, like, really gets built or anything. So you'd have that time to discuss with these people, you know, have that length of time.
And that would be the responsibility of who's in charge, which is Parks and Rec.
Correct.
So I'm not opposed to what you're proposing here, but I guess the question is, if we play that out and the residents say we don't want any lights, then what?
A decision to make.
Joe, is, does this specifically trigger planning? I just, yeah.
I don't know, really. I mean, it's more of an informational item, but nevertheless, I mean...
You want to make sure you're public, everyone is understood of what's going on, yeah.
Yeah. I mean, if I looked out my driveway and saw something that wasn't there before, I might wonder. You know, and again, you heard earlier, not everybody follows what's going on in Parks and Rec. And I do know that they, this was part of their plan, was to, you know, work on security.
That's, I guess I come back to, it's, the property owners, how would we change the plan if someone, like, if it's in compliance with the lighting ordinance?
Right, we know.
Yeah.
Right, so that's how I'm kind of, I'm all, I'm not opposed to that, I just don't know what the outcome would be. It would seem likely that I would still move forward.
Correct. Because it complies with the ordinance.
Correct. So I guess, is this more of an informational outreach to the affected, to those around, is that here's this, here's what we'll be doing?
There is a possibility, again, these, this photometric plan can be shared with these people. And, I mean, if there are some people that do have some concerns, like we talked about, I think on the other one, you can move these things around to make it a little more desirable if we get some opinion. So, I mean, I wouldn't want to just let the public fully design the project per se, because there's a lot of other impacts on there, but to get their input is always a good idea.
Agreed.
I mean, really, the three that are by the parking lot, there's nothing across the street, as I recall.
Oh, really?
Some of that may, you know, they're, the one guy who's right next to it, you know.
Dana, is there nothing sent out to, you talked into the microphone a little bit ago.
There is nothing sent out to neighbors for...
Not by me.
I mean, by...
And there wouldn't be a requirement to...
No, but is, is it a practice, is, I guess, really what my question is. When you're doing something in the township, how do people find out? And I thought there was a newspaper that was following on it, so maybe a mistake.
Not on something like this, no.
That's typically SLU zoning changes.
If you've got a hearing.
I know, but not something that Parks and Rec is doing.
Yeah, okay.
So, Joe, what would, what would we be approving here? Is this a...
You're not really required to approve anything. It's more just, you're receiving information and getting some feedback.
Okay.
And you will carry that?
Yes, I will communicate with Clara, with the Parks and Rec Director. I can include Joe on that email tomorrow, just so he's aware and can further communicate with all this commission, and just, and will keep you apprised of any of the feedback we get.
It's basically a courtesy and to answer questions.
Exactly.
Yep, makes sense. Okay, any other questions for Brent before he leaves? Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. So moving along, that wraps up our new business for this evening. Item 12 is comments from committees and consultants. Commissioner Boyce already updated us on the agriturism committee. Joe, any other comments as our consultant?
No, no, sorry.
Okay. Other comments from commissioners? I think you said you might have a couple.
Yeah, I just wanted to provide feedback on some approvals that the board made at its August meeting. We didn't have one in September, so I just wanted feedback. The board agreed to follow the recommendation of the planning commission to deny the walkway zoning request to M1 up on Van Dyke roughly before Evelyn Road. They followed the, followed the PC recommendation and approved the Maryfield SLU that was for an accessory building on Camerac Drive. They followed the PC's recommendation and denied the Lombardo zoning request, which was the one roughly between Van Dyke and Mellon Street, south of the Sheenahs. And they followed the PC's recommendation and approved the Harler SLU that was for, also for an accessory building on 34 Mile Road.
Thank you for the updates. Any other comments from commissioners? Hearing none, I move to adjourn at 8:15 PM.
Second.
Seconded by Cupids. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Meeting is adjourned.
Thank you for staying.